This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of the council chambers. Please speak into the microphone if you come up with a comment. As mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or a participation in the meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the comment is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, is repetitive, or not on topic that is relevant to the borough's governing body. Diane, could you lead us in the pleasure, Legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilwoman Postonik.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hofer.
Agenda questions by council members. Any questions? Seeing that there's none, we have no presentations and awards tonight or anything like that. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. Motion for approval of the minutes from May 3rd to 2022, May 17th, 2022, June 14th, 2022, July 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes, and thank you, Jennifer.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilman Postonik.
Yes.
Okay, before we, I'm going to start off tonight's meeting, and it's something that I've been reflecting on. And today is a special day, and I'll just go right into it. Tonight marks the conclusion of a worldwide observant of Yom HaShorah, a day established to the remembrance of the horrors of the Holocaust. I join with the members of the Jewish community in making this day of memory, nothing unique, the unique, I'm sorry, with the, nothing uniqueness of the Holocaust, and the insulting, and saluting the brave survivors. In a statement posted on the website of the United States Embassy in Israel, President Biden addressed the meaning of this day. He stated, during Yom HaShorah, and throughout these days of remembrance, we mourn the six million Jews that were murdered during the Holocaust, as well as the millions of Roma, Santi, Slavs, disabled person, LGBTQI-plus individuals, and political dissidents that were murdered at the hands of the Nazi and their collaborators. Together with the courageous survivors, descendants of victims, and people around the world, we renew our solemn vow, never again. The horrors of the Holocaust are painful to recount, the savage murder of innocent families, and the systematic dehumanization of an entire population. We remember this, we remember their cries for help that went unanswered, and the bright futures that were cut short. You must never look away from the truth of what happened. The right of remembrance becomes more urgent with each passing year, as fewer survivors remain to share their stories and open our eyes to the harm of unchecked hatred. Unfortunately, hatred never truly goes away. It only hides, lurk until it's given, lurk until it's given oxygen to emerge again. We have seen this hard truth across our country, from swastickers on cars, anti-Semitic banners on bridges, to attacks on Jewish people at schools and at synagogue, and outright Holocaust denialism. The vermin and violence of anti-Semitism goes beyond all the values we stand for as American, and as it's a stark reminder, as a dear friend Eli Wiesel once said, that indifference is always the friend of the enemy. As my father taught me, silence is complicity. And I happen to have met Eli Wiesel in Washington at a rally. Also, as we mark Yom HaShorah, we are reminding of the importance of recording the stories of Holocaust victims who cannot speak for themselves. But in that vein, I commend my mentor, my friend, and former mayor Merrill Frank, who recently published on Earth, A Lost Actress, A Forbidden Book, and A Search For A Life In The Shadows Of The Holocaust. This book, this book, which was reviewed by The Wall Street Journal, is described on Amadon as Merrill's journey to seek the truth about a beloved revolutionary cousin, to celebrate this actress, celebrated actress in Vienna before World War II, and to answer the unique questions of generations and the horrors of the Holocaust. I wish Merrill much success with this book. I am proud to be her friend, and I wish her much more and much more success, as she brings the stories and forth of the Holocaust and what has happened to the Jewish people. Our parts are very, our paths have been very, very similar. And at this time, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. While attending the conference of May in Atlantic City last Thursday, I had the opportunity to meet with the Director of Local Aid and Economic Development for the Department of Transportation to discuss two matters that are of urgency to our town. One is the road diet on Raritan Avenue on the stretch of road near the border of Edison, which was the site a few years back of an awful accident on a Saturday morning that took the life of a young boy who was walking with his mother. We, we want to institute measures to slow down traffic in that area to decrease the chance of future tragedies. The other is a permanent closer to South Third Avenue to car, to car traffic in the block near Raritan Avenue. Many residents have indicated that this change is a priority for them and represents a quality of life improvement in our town. During my conversation with DOT officials, I stressed the vital importance of these issues to Highland Park and emphasized the need for them to be prioritized. The director assured me that she has taken my comments and she will be following up with me very soon. On another note, a happy note, and I hope to share more on this later, later on during the year, I should say, I am pleased to offer an initial report of some unqualified good news for Highland Park. A former police officer that lived in town passed away back in 2022, and he bequeathed his will to contribute to the, he bequeathed his will with a generous sum of money to be given to various charities, organizations in Highland Park. For example, the, he, to purchase, the purchase of a new fire engine, a new ambulance for the first aid squad, improvement of public library, purchase of vehicles for the police department, provide numerous contributions to Highland Park Gives A Hoot, the Food Pantry, Highland Park Educational Foundation, Highland Park Autism Group, Highland Park Parents of Athlete, and the Central Jersey Diaper Bank. We are grateful for this former residence and for his exceptional generosity, as this concerns public safety and the essential services to Highland Park. Lastly, I want to point out that on Sunday, Saturday, April 22nd starts Earth Day. This annual event is greatly, is a great opportunity to celebrate Mother Nature, our environment, and our effort to preserve it, as an asset that we have to share amongst us all. Highland Park has a unique role to play and has played a unique role. We are, we are activists. We are the ones who tend the soil, and with the environmental, with, at the Environmental Commission, the shade tree. We care about the soil, we care about the trees, we care about our air. I believe that in Highland Park, every day is Earth Day, and we are known throughout the county for our uncommon civic action to our residents to improve the natural environment. We have moved our Highland Park Earth Day celebration to May. Councilmember Hirsch will be telling you more about it. Thank you. And now I'm going to move on to council reports. Councilmember George, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the mayor for marking the importance of remembering the Holocaust, its horrible cost to us all that lives on to this day, no matter who we are, where we come from, and also the memorialization, and thank you to former mayor for bringing out her book here in town and making it an event that marks our town. At the same time, also, I extend wishes for peace, peace, health, and happiness for those of us who are celebrating Edafatar this week. I reach out condolences to the family of Ralph Yarle, but condolences are not enough. The murder of a young man for just ringing a doorbell is a sickness that we all have to own and work to cure. Just saying it is another state, another mindset is not enough. We have to change this society. We have to make it work from this town to this county to this state and then nationwide. My library report, we had a long, steady, heavy rain over the weekend. The library is pleased to report that there were no leaks for the first time in 20 years. The most recent repairs have hopefully cured this longtime problem. Thank you Borough Council for authorizing those repairs last month, and we hope that it will last. Our DPW superintendent has also found a company that was able to service the one disabled HVAC which we thought was aged out. It is working, it actually has been air conditioning the community room for the last couple of weeks, and they had it working and tested it for the opening of the John Maron One Man Show a couple of weeks ago. And hopefully that'll extend the life long enough for us to be able to concentrate on some other issues on the roof. The Library Board of Trustees conducted its interviews of the final two candidates out of a very, very interesting and well-qualified field for the vacant executive director's position, and selected Michael Bootitch, who is currently the assistant director of the library in another Middlesex County library system, and he has accepted our offer effective to start on May 8th. The mayor and I met with Michael at the Board of Trustees meeting last night. I sat in on the interviews, I was very impressed by him. He's very, very creative, knows how to run a large library, and, as I'll announce in a minute, he also has experience in running large library construction projects. So I really like Michael, I've met with him several times. We'll be introducing him in person on May 2nd to all of the town and to council. He'll bring, he brings a great portfolio, and we're all really looking forward to it. Finally, the library construction project will be gearing up soon, the resolution to approve the agreement with Moba Carpentry, the selected contractors on tonight's agenda. Soon we'll be meeting with the contractor to set the schedule. We anticipate, however, that due to the scope of the work, which involves a lot of internal improvements, all new carpeting, changes to the structure inside and outside, and structural repairs, there may be closings of the physical building. The staff is already planning for that, including expansion of remote services, which fortunately, the bright side of the pandemic is we have an excellent remote service in the library, and it's lending facilities, and we're now part of the statewide LMX system. We're actually exceeded hard copy lending during the pandemic, and broke a lot of records for us. So we'll be working also with the Borough Administrator. She and I have been calling around looking for space for storage, but we may be able to actually have some hard copy access for everyone. So there'll be a lot of details once we get the contractor on board and we learn what the schedule is. With regard to the Police Department, the chief has made an offer of employment to Officer Jonathan LaRage, who has accepted the position and we welcome him to our community. He was highly recommended by the Public Safety Interview Committee, and he will start with our department on May 2nd. Based on the study performed by the Police Department over the last year and the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, the planning for changing the flow of traffic at Irving School to maximize safety and traffic flow during school hours has been finalized. It will change the westerly flow of traffic on Central Avenue from South 11th Avenue to South 10th Avenue by making it one way. The Public Works Committee recommended that the change go into place for a few weeks before the end of this school year, so that residents and parents can get used to the change and the pattern this year and start the 2023-2024 school year with the plan in place. The department is also holding an operation takeback collection of unused medicines at the community center this weekend. It will be on both Saturday and Sunday this year, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this year, under DEA guidelines, we are allowed to collect and dispose of vaping equipment. The requirement, however, from the state is that the batteries have to be removed. Finally, the resolution to approve our joining the Arrive program is on the agenda for tonight. This is actually the implementation of a program that has been discussed for many years, was part of the planning for revitalizing the Police Department many years ago, and is in place with our neighboring communities of New Brunswick, Woodbridge, and Edison, in partnership with the Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare Center. This will provide a healthcare responder who is trained to deal with emergency calls, which involve a person with emotional or behavioral challenges. The program also will provide more training for all responders to be able to better respond to the needs of persons when intervention and understanding can help to diffuse situations through the use of trained personnel and the appropriate responses when law enforcement needs a helping hand from people who are trained to deal with mental health issues, behavior officials, drug-induced behaviors, and so on. It is a program long coming, the partnership is going to work well, and it will be, once it's rolled out, a 24/7 program. Just a brief update echoing what the mayor has already said, the Kushner Estate grants in the area of public safety are significant. The volunteer fire department is looking forward to possibility of a new engine. The Police Department, the PBA, will actually be the recipient of grants which will involve substantial improvements as well. Even our first aid squad will benefit with substantial aid and upgrades. Since a lot of the details, as the mayor has noted, are still in the finalizing stages, we can, we can leave it at that point. But the library also, to finalize, the library will also receive substantial interior and exterior upgrades to provide new facilities for the public. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Postonik.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a short report for this evening, but first just wanted to thank you for your comments on Yom HaShorah, may we never forget, and thank you, Councilman George, for your time of the comments on.
Microphone, please. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Councilman George, for your comments on the Hannah tragedy that occurred with Ralph Yarle. So on to my report. So first, just wanted to briefly reiterate the food shopping assistance that is available through the Department of Community Services to help residents out during this period of time where we are without a supermarket. So as I've noted previously, there will be regularly scheduled weekday trips to various grocery stores, and trips may also be requested at other times, including some nights and weekends. A community center membership is required, which involves a $20 fee for Highland Park residents who have not yet signed up. Online food shopping support is also available to anyone who needs it, and if you'd like to reserve a slot on a trip to a grocery store and need any other assistance, please contact the Department of Community Services at 732-819-052, and the transportation schedule is also available on the Highland Park website. Some other community services highlights, we have some summer camp updates. Aftercare will now be available for the summer day camp, which will be available from Monday through Thursday between 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. for weeks one through six. And this program is limited to the day camp. There will also be a mini theater camp from June 26th through June 29th, and a mini day camp from July 5th through July 7th to help bridge the gap between the end of the school year and the official start of summer camp. The mini camps have limited spots available, so please sign up soon if you are interested. And you can please check out the recreation website for registration information for the day camps and sports camps and theater camps, including the mini camps. A couple of arts updates. The yarn heart art installation on the Albany Street Bridge is now set for May 6th. The Highland Park Art Commission, in collaboration with some art students from New Brunswick High School, will be making yarn hearts and installing them on the fence along the Albany Street Bridge, promote building bridges to connect with people on a larger scale. So the installation will actually be conducted the morning of May 6th, weather permitting. It'll be soon after that, once it's all up, it'll be available for everyone to stop by and check out and appreciate it. I think it's going to be really cute and really cool. And then next up, on arts commission-related news, the, happy to report that the Arts Commission won a park partners grant to install art decals on sidewalks throughout town. They're going to be soliciting local artists to design the art on these decals soon, and installation will be planned for the fall to coincide with arts in the park. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
There, nothing much to report, just wanted to remind everyone, today is tax day, as your finance chair. Please remember to file your taxes, and hopefully everyone found their anchor rebate useful, and state legislators, let's do it again same time next year. That's my report, Mayor.
Second. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to add my thanks. My report is a lot shorter because you went first, which is fantastic. It's the, I really appreciate you reaching out about Yom HaShorah.
We're in the same boat.
Very, very much appreciated. You know, it's a day about remembering, so we never forget, and so thank you very much for, for that. And also to thank former mayor Merrill Frank on her book, which is a testimony to everything that Yom HaShorah is about. So thank you on, on both those fronts. So to my report, the farmer's market is back, which is fantastic. It started up again on April 7th, and so it's, it's back like gangbusters again, so please check it out on Friday afternoons. Also, the annual 5K race and Spring Street Fair is coming on May 7th. The 5K race starts at 9:00 a.m., and the street fair and Earth Day celebration will come around about 11:00, 11:30. It's a great day every year, it's a highlight of the, you know, of Highland Park, I think. And again, you can please check out mainstreet.org for any details on either of those events or all of the upcoming Main Street events. And then one more shout out to Main Street is you may have noticed out in front of Pinos, there is a parklet. There's been one out in front of the sushi place before, but it's much smaller than the one that Main Street put together, because the first one was put together by Boy Scouts, the second one was put together by, by Main Street. So, but thank you very much for them. This is one of four that Main Street is going to be building using some state grant money that they got a bit ago. So those will be out for, in time for summer. And then lastly, just to report that the Planning Board approved the redevelopment plan for the supermarket lot. So to just be clear that the role of the Planning Board is to decide whether a proposed redevelopment plan was consistent for the master plan. Now, in planning speak, it is that it was not inconsistent with the master plan, which is quite confusing. But what it means is that the redevelopment plan that we have put forward is consistent with the master plan. I mean, it doesn't violate any of the ideas or approaches of the master plan. So they've sent it back to us, we will have a review and a public hearing of that in May, so stay tuned for that. It's a great step to be able to move the supermarket process forward, and so thank you to the Planning Board for their quick action on that. So, and with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Canavera.
Yes, thank you. Board of Health wants to remind everybody that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which strives to be the voice of victims of sexual abuse and violence. The mission is to increase awareness about sexual violence worldwide, educate communities on how to prevent it. If you or anyone you know is experiencing any form of sexual abuse, please report it to police. Sexual assault is a crime, and no one should take it lightly. Do not be afraid to speak out if it's happening to you or someone you know. The Rape Abuse and Incest National Network Hotline is 800-656-HOPE, H-O-P-E. The Commission for Universal Access would like to remind people that April is also National Autism Awareness Month. The Autism Society founded the event to increase awareness, advocate awareness, and spark change in schools, communities, medical centers, and businesses on how people with autism are treated. The Community Food Pantry is open the second and fourth Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m., and again 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the Saturday following the Thursday from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Every, of every month. Donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. The Highland Park Gives A Hoot Food Pantry is every Tuesday at the Zone 16 Center from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and donations can be made by mailing a check to the Borough Hall with a memo that it's for the HP Gives A Hoot Food Pantry. Between these two programs, we are still serving over 300 families, and we anticipate that to grow now that the pandemic extra money has gone away. The Mental Health Commission wants to remind anybody with a mental health crisis to please reach out for help. The Middlesex County Crisis Hotlines are Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare Hotline The Raritan Bay Medical Center Hotline is 732-442-3794. And for those who don't want to talk but would prefer to text, you can text HOME, H-O-M-E, to 741-741. I'd also like to add, at the Housing Authority meeting, the board did ask the residents about how they're handling not having a shopping center or a food store in the area, and all of the residents that spoke were very happy with the job that the borough was doing with getting them to the stores, and said that there's plenty of opportunities for all of them to get to the stores.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Hirsch, I chair the Public Works Committee, and I just, I did just want to thank everybody up here for your amazing remarks, and it is such an honor to serve with such compassionate and deep-thinking members of the community. It's, and I, and it's really important that, you know, we think about, you know, the impact of everything going on in the world, but also locally, and how it affects people in the real time, including what I'm about to say. So as the mayor mentioned, our Environmental Commission's Earth Day event is now less than two weeks away, but it is, but because we do things differently in Highland Park, it is not on Earth Day, because every day is Earth Day, and it's going to be on Sunday, May 7th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's part of the street fair. So the Earth Day Fair is part of a larger Highland Park Street Fair event, and their tables will be, the Environmental Commission- tables will be, the Environmental Commission will be setting up tables along the Sustainable Highland Park on North Third Avenue from Raritan Avenue to Denison Street. And we're lucky to have a lot of built-in traffic and visitors because the event is right in the heart of the Street Fair. So enjoy the Street Fair, and then like last year, come by and check out the demonstrations that we'll have set up. In case of rain, and this is important, because it does rain sometimes, the Street Fair is rain or shine, but in case of rain, the Earth Day event will be moved indoors to the community center right here at 220 South Sixth Avenue. And that's only if it's a washout, so keep that in mind. But the Street Fair is rain or shine, very important. That is not moving indoors. Sorry, Matt. Please reach, please reach out with any questions. And thank you, everybody, for your participation. This is a huge undertaking, and a lot of planning goes into this, so we really appreciate everybody for coming together and doing this. In October, last October, just for a little context, Sustainable Highland Park and the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group began doing two cleanups per month on the first Saturday and third Sunday of each month, and we plan on continuing that schedule. This is really great because it's a baked-in kind of community trash pickup endeavor, and it's, it is growing. And I have to just give, you know, huge thanks to the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Highland Park for participating in this and for facilitating. Our next cleanup is Saturday, May 6th, and that's the day before the Street Fair, so we want to make sure the town looks really good for all the out-of-town visitors who are going to be here. In particular, the rain gardens on South Third, Fourth, and Fifth, and North Third Avenue, where the Earth Day portion will be, those are high-profile areas where trash does collect, despite the best efforts of our Public Works and other volunteers, but the trash does collect in there, so that's, those are the hotspots where they'll be focused on. The locations for cleanups for June and beyond have not yet been decided, but please come to an upcoming Environmental Commission meeting or Sustainable Highland Park Committee meeting, and you can provide your feedback or any locations that we might be missing. We, you can always reach out to, again, you can always reach out to the Environmental Commission, and all scheduled public cleanups can be found on the Highland Park, excuse me, the, oh, the name is escaping me. I'm sorry, the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group, and their website is hpeeg.com. The Department of Public Works is growing. We welcomed a new employee, Nathaniel Smith, on March 1st. Welcome. And additionally, two new laborers who possess commercial driver's licenses, CDLs, spent the month cross-training to operate the automated sanitation trucks, as well as learning the operational functions of the trucks. They learned the specific routes and were given instruction on routine maintenance of the trucks. Bulk trash collections are up and running, and we currently, we are currently booking appointments for April. There are still a few available, so please reach out, as well as in May. If you have any questions or you need additional information, please contact DPW at 732-514-1277. And just because it's a kind of a perennial question, I did just want to mention electronic recycling. We do provide electronic recycling drop-off here at the DPW Building at 444 Valentine Street, and this service is free for borough residents. The following items are considered covered electronic devices, and they must be recycled per New Jersey law. That includes televisions, computer monitors, desktop or personal computers, laptops, printers, fax machines, and all other electronic items may be disposed of via regular household garbage or collection or bulk trash. Please contact DPW for additional details, and you can also, you can also go to, if you go to www.hpboro.com, in the dropdown menu under Department, go to Public Works, and then go to Garbage. And then you can also find out on the same dropdown menus, if you click on Trees, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee met this month, and letters to everyone getting a tree went out on March 24th. So if you requested a tree and you were a resident, you should have gotten a letter confirming that request, because no trees without a home this time. So that's really, really great news. And that is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do they still have the Recycle Coach, the app?
We do have the Recycle Coach app, yes. Oh, I would tell everybody exactly how to do it, but you can download the app, and we can, we can put some information out there as well, and that's actually a really good idea. Recycle Coach helps you track your garbage collection and recycling pickup, as well as, as well as any, well, recycling garbage, so you never miss a beat, particularly on holidays.
Okay, Borough Attorney's Report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time to move on to our public discussion. Total allotted time is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that's not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have elapsed. She will give you a warning of 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at three minutes to mark and make sure that everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of public meetings, is repetitive, and is not on topic of relevance to the Borough governing body. Please announce your name and your address when you come up to speak into the microphone.
Do it.
Okay, Lois, Lovey, More Second Avenue, is this working? Can you hear me? Um, you mentioned Mayor, and congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
The former Mayor, Merrill. Now, there used to be a huge ropes gallery of all the mayors from 1904, right as soon as you found the wall, the empty wall opposite the Fishbowl. And old white guys, and as soon as, I think, Penner was the last empty space available, so no Orbach, no Merrill. Merrill wanted no big deal for being the first female, which I think was wrong. Helen Heard was the first female councilperson ever here in, I think, the late 60s or the 70s. So can't we please find from the archives or wherever that old photo frame went to, and add all the other mayors, including your own photo? And let's show diversity, female, black, anything good here. And I wanted to ask, I think, one of the oldest Borough employees is downstairs. Why is she in a corner? Why can't we have a nice office somewhere over here for the 10, 11 years that she's been here? Why can't there be, and you should be up here. Why can't we show people who walk in here for 10 minutes, pay their bill five minutes? Can't we show more than old white guys, or now we've got nice white ladies and guys? But can't we please show the improvement in the 21st century? You can have them down the hall there. So you mentioned Merrill. What was the name of her new book?
Unearthed.
Unearthed.
Unearthed?
Unearthed. It's on Amazon, amazon.com.
Thank you, I'll be back.
Okay. I'll look into it.
John Kovak, 206 North Good Avenue. Just like to make a brief comment here. I don't think it's a good idea to be focusing on white people, who's white, who's not white. I don't think that's helping for the town, and just wanted to put that on the record. Thanks.
Any additional public comments at this time? Seeing that there's none.
I'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, um, there's a, I've got the lawsuit here from a couple of years ago, when there was a bullying problem, and of course, the employee was, pled not guilty or took no contest, whatever the legal term was. But it goes on today. It continues. You've got mean girls working here. Just, in the clerk's office is a stack of information that I requested, although it's triplicate of what I requested for the company that did the appraisals, the property appraisals. So you have three or four sets of the resumes of the contract, which is almost an inch deep, if you remember. So this happened a few years, it's only started happening about four or five years ago. Cleveland Avenue, I received three, I paid for it, so just spend up to $20, three sets of the information of those 110 condos that went up. Three sets of them when I got home, two sets of something else. Now?
The microphone's off, sorry. I figured you might want to know.
You sound?
People can't hear you online.
And, and so, so you've got, you've got a machine that's doing extra work, you've got a stack of paper that is in hydroglit form.
Nope, it's dead.
It's not off, is that very?
No, you're good.
Okay.
It's going into the system.
So, and you've got somebody doing this, somebody setting the machine, wasting the paper, and I looked through five or six inches, but one inch aside, because it was getting late a couple of Fridays ago, I pointed out that I had one inch to go, and lo and behold, when I came that Monday or Tuesday, the mean girls had mixed everything together, so the one inch, so I had to start all over again. And I gladly show you, if you take a break or when you do take a break, the stack, because I wanted to look at a few more pages. So the bullying is continuing. I'm sure there's much more that I realized. So I just thought that, I'm still going to say, it's not just my request that people know that there's a diverse town and a diverse Borough Hall. But citizens used to say to me, there's no Jewish people here. I used to hear that. Viker, this, Hesh was here, Orbach was here, whatever. But in question, they say, no, I'm not working in Borough Hall. It would be very, very helpful if the bully, mean girls, were downstairs, and you and the longtime employee was upstairs. That's all. It's just, it's just a matter of sensibility and diversity. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure about this mean girl thing that you're proposing, but let me say this, that our employees do, they do yeoman's work in getting requests of Oprahs, and I know there's volumes of them that is requested on a constant weekly, daily basis, and they do their best to make sure that they address the needs of our constituents. Talk, move in persons back and forth. We have tried it, we have grown in many areas, and the space that we utilize downstairs is best used at this time for myself and everyone who's downstairs. We don't have enough space upstairs to accommodate everyone. Thank you, Lois. Council President Hirsch?
Thank you. I did just want to echo your sentiment about the staff. One thing I learned when I was a reporter, and I think in life it's generally a good rule, is to always work with municipal staff. There is nobody who can, who can provide access for more information on a local level or who can answer more questions for you than the staff here at Borough Hall. And fortunately, I don't think the overriding sentiment is that there is any meanness. You know, as public servants, you know, we have to be, you know, honest with you, but also happy, and that's really important, that we, to show that we are happy and excited and motivated to do the work of the town, and that includes the municipal staff. And I think the culture that the mayor has set here in Borough Hall has really emanated, you know, throughout, throughout the building. So I do think that, you know, our staff here is very hardworking and does do an enormous amount of work for the town that, you know, it's like an iceberg, you only see a very, very little bit of it.
All righty, and now we're going to go on to ordinance. Ordinance requires second reading, clerk?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9 concerning the expiration terms of members of various boards, committees, and commissions was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
And I just want to explain this one, this particular one. I have, I have noticed that boards and commissions are appointed throughout the year at various times when persons come on. And to save time and to be much more efficient, we are accustomed that when the appointments are renewed, they're renewed at, all the appointments go dormant at the end of the year, and then when we do reorg, we reappoint, depending on when your term ends. So instead of coming on during the middle of the year, or two months into the year, or haphazard, streamline the process, and that's what this is aiming to do. So it's much more efficient, and we can have more consistent information on the Borough website and everywhere else. Okay, motion?
We need a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing? Seeing that there's none, motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilman Postolnik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 13 requires first reading. I think we're going to table this one.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
We move to table, we need to work through some more, some more stuff on this particular one.
So we just have to do a motion to?
Table.
Motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do the roll call? They said, we got the ayes.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Consent agenda 14A through 14F.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilman Postolnik?
Yes.
And resolution requiring a separate reading?
Resolution 423120, resolution to amend the 2023 municipal temporary budget.
So moved.
Roll call.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilman Postolnik?
Yes.
And public, appointments, Public Information Commission, Laurel Cornfield, Mason Resnick, Haim Cohen, Molly Turner, Jen Voorhees, Olivia Parker, Valerie Dart Whiteman, Library Board Representative Mark Krieger, Board of Ed Representative, roll call?
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
And yes, and thank you to all the volunteers for the commission.
Councilman George?
I always say that the volunteers are, A, the best source of information for us in doing our job, and B, I like working with all of our volunteers because of the input they, they give us, as Councilman, Council President Hirsch says, to keep us not only honest and tracking true, but, but happy. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and you have two alumni of the Public Information Committee sitting up here, so yes.
Founding members. Weren't we, Matt, the founding members?
Yep, it's actually three.
Oh, who?
Right.
You were on the Public Information?
For like a minute and a half, but yes. My bad, three! It's a breeding ground.
Wow, yeah, that's awesome.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilman Postolnik?
Yes.
Rent Leveling Board, alternate, Bilani will be alternate landlord number one, and we're going to be having discussion about the rent leveling board, because that's an important one to have and to get that commission up and running. And Mayor's appointment to the following, Human Relations Commission, Almitra Lundy, alternate number one. No confirmation needed. Okay, now we go into our second public discussion. Each speaker has three minutes, but the comments may be on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer 30-second warning, and then indicate when three minutes have elapsed. The second, the second session will wrap up by 9:00 p.m. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when the three minutes have elapsed. She will give you a warning of 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure that everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of public meetings and is not on topic of relevance to the borough governing body. Please announce your name and your address for the record as you come up to speak into the microphone. Lois, North Second Avenue. What does the new, or the new or the same Public Information Commission do? Council President, Council President, who was one of the founding members, I'll let him speak to that.
Basically, the Public Information Committee, you know, aggregates items of interest and, and, and works with our staff, and works with our communications staff, Monica Jackson and Harry Glazer, on promoting, on, on getting, on getting the news of the borough out there. So, yeah. And works on the quarterly newsletter, provides, works and provides content for social media, addresses issues on the website and so forth. And each one of these members represents, you know, different, different areas. You know, Jen Voorhees, for example, is on this, is on the Board of Ed. Val Wideman is a library representative. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good working group. It's advisory.
Okay, so it's mostly computer stuff and then the quarterly?
I wouldn't say necessarily computer stuff. If, if there's programming at the library, for example, that representative would pass that information on to us or share that information, so we can either put it on the website, put it on, put it on social media and compile, yes. So that, a part of their work is compiling and sharing information across the borough. Same thing with the school person, school representative.
Okay, because a neighbor asked, not so much on this information, but she's a pedestrian for the, for always. She has a license plate that would never drive. She says, where do I get? I said, somewhere, there's going to be a shuttle, they're going to be somewhere. So I heard a little bit, I think it was called the Community Center, I remember who said it, but it wasn't clear. So I don't know if it's DCA you contact or this community. I said, sorry, the senior center first. But what if people who aren't seniors, who, who do they know to contact? I mean, there used to be a sign out on, on the avenue where the senior building was and the Sephora Market, but of course, that disappeared decades ago. And that was handy, where if you put a sign here in front of Borough Wall and said, meeting's coming, or planning board, we something, a physical sign, but I know that's a while there and that's old-fashioned, that's not going to happen. What I wanted to say is, if you look geographically, Highland Park is the heart of this state. Look at the position. We have, we have, we invented a birth of, of a globally-used Band-Aid. We have flacopagress, which seems nothing, big deal now, but nobody was putting the ingredients together a hundred and some years ago into one package and having ready-made, like we have today, ready-made frozen foods or dinner, whatever you want. So that's huge. And then we have two on the plaque, if the plaque is correct, Nobel Prize winners, and no one knows, Emma Tuchan, that's the brandy borough. Why are we so secretive? Why can't we discuss? You want people here, you want restaurants booming. I mean, the retail will never be back. But why not, there should be maybe, I don't know, press release? There is a home news, there is a Star Ledger.
30 seconds.
Was that three minutes?
30 seconds.
Okay, so that, that's what I wanted to say. I just think, things staying here, you think it gets out to the public, it doesn't, when, whatever, 10, 15 years ago, when this council passed no rock salt? Stop and shop, we're, we're selling rock salt that winter, months later. And I said, this is hurting the dogs. I told them, I don't know what happened, it did disappear, but it's not getting beyond these walls. It hasn't. Thank you.
And Lois, maybe you should join one of these volunteer organizations to help just get the information out.
They would shut me up, they do. That's what everybody tries, thank you.
I look forward to you joining one of these boards and commission to help us out, especially in communication. Okay.
Mayor, can I?
Yes. A council member is gonna speak, he's gonna go right into the microphone and let you hear exactly where these resources are available.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm not referring to the State Department of Community Affairs, referring to Highland Park's own Department of Community Services, which is operated out of the community center right across from this building. So that is where you can access transportation to grocery stores, and it's not limited to seniors. Just to clarify that for the record.
What is she called? Is it the senior building?
It's Highland Park Department of Community Services, and Kim Perkins McGrath is the director over there. And if, I know you're going to tell me, you don't do the website, but if you look it up, you will find the phone number, and the information is there.
She doesn't have a computer. I think she has some kind of tablet, thank you.
Oh, so you are familiar? You are familiar with, with her? Okay.
I talked to her, so.
Great. Please do ask her for those in, the, the list of where people can go if you need that. And they do have printed materials over there as well. Uh, Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. And then just, just, just to add, there are, there are some physical kiosks, informational kiosks in town. One near you on, on South Second, one out in front of Irving on, on 11th and Woodbridge. There's one down here in front of the community center. And then the, and then the Rite Aid on the corner, they allow the borough to do their postings there as well. And of course, here at Borough Hall, the meetings are posted, you know, over there. But, I mean, yeah, there's, there's always more room to, to grow, but we would love to hear your good ideas, honestly. And if you're afraid that, like, the Public Information Committee will shut, will, will shut you out, well, then your representatives will communicate your good ideas to the Public Information Committee. So please, please, please keep them coming.
As my mom would say, the biggest room in the house is the room for improvement. So please do come and share.
That's right.
All righty, Mayor, can I just, and our meetings are in the Home News Tribune. We, we, every year, we select newspapers that, at the reorg, that we have to post these public meetings. And so they are there in the newspaper, in print, too. I don't know where they are in print, but they're there in the newspaper.
Okay. I see there's no more public comments. So at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna end the public comment section, and we have no formal actions to be taken in our work session. And we have no executive session either. So I'm going to move that the meeting be adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all. Be safe, enjoy Earth Day.